And this is a special meeting. And we have a fairly lengthy agenda, so is... Jerry, you want to come up and say the invocation for us? I asked my buddy Jerry Huffman to come up to the podium and say the invocation for us. And while Jerry's on his way up, just remind everyone to silence their cell phone or turn them off.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we would like to thank thee for this day that you have blessed us with. We pray that you will bless each and every one on the court. We pray that we'll bless them to do the work of the county that will help the people and be the right thing to do. And we pray that you'll watch over each and every one as we go forth. We ask thee in Jesus' name.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Present.
We have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. And I'd like to ask Ms. Justice if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2023, meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Now, before we get into the agenda, we do have our third commissioner back for this meeting. Commissioner had a little health problem, and we're good. It's good that you're back. We're glad you're okay. You're still on as ever. That didn't change. But you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for the prayers, ones that don't know. June 4, I had the widowmaker heart attack. Forty-six-year-old, no pain, no sickness, just tightness in my chest. When I took a real deep breath, went to ER, and they came in with the news. They said, "Mr. Atkins, you're having the widowmaker." Eight percent survived the widowmaker. I said, "What's next?" They said, "Well, we're gonna go in with stents. Stents don't work, we're gonna do open-heart surgery on you." God pulled me through it, the surgeon, the doctors, the nurses at Pikeville Hospital. Very indebted to them. They was great. Get your heart checked, everybody, because I was healthy, I thought. And it snuck up on me, and, you know, I got three children about left and a wife over not taking care of myself. And, you know, I will do anything I can for anybody in this world, but, you know, I've got to do something for myself from now on. I got to take care of myself.
Well, it's not like you're not in a stressful job.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Been there and done that, and, you know, it's... People don't realize the toll... Let me just say this. It's not just that you've been, you know, now doing this job for five months, six months, but you've been with the fire department for a long time. You've worked in EMS, worked a day job too, supporting your family. You know, people don't often realize the stress that public servants are under, whether you work at the road department, or you work, you know, in the solid waste department, or you're dealing with the public as an elected official.
Oh, yeah.
And I think social media has made it worse. Ronald's even laughing at that one, because it's true. I mean, people...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
People on social media now simply want to just, you know... Everything's negative. There's no good news. There's nothing positive. I think you saw that the other day when you posted that we're paving on a road.
Yeah, yeah.
And just ask people to watch out, you know, and be patient with the slow traffic, and you got people on there going, "Well, you know, my road's not been paved." Well, you know, we can't pave a thousand miles of roads every year. And we can't pick up, you know... I mean, but we are doing more than's been done, you know. The last court and this court, we're doing more paving than had been done in many, many years. But we just ask people to be patient and, you know, understand that we're doing the best we can. And at the end of the day, you do have to take care of yourself and deal with the stress of being in these positions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it... Like I said, my diabetes and I wasn't taking the best care of myself, you know. I mean, you know, I've been a diabetic now twenty years, and it sort of just slipped through the cracks. I didn't... I didn't never, never thought of it, never really paid attention. I just kept going. But I do appreciate everybody's prayers and the phone calls, the texts. I mean, you know, first couple hours of it, I didn't really know a whole lot was going on, but my wife and my family did, because, I mean, it was overwhelming, all the texts and the calls. Once it got out that I was sick and in the hospital, I mean, there was... I'm gonna say upwards of a thousand phone calls in a couple hours.
I don't know if you remember, but you talked to me when you were still at ICU after you came out of the stents.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought that... I remember talking to everybody. That's one thing about it. Ninety percent of the whole process, I remember. I mean, I was awake.
I mean, we're glad you're okay. We just wanted to give you a shout out. And, you know, it puts all this stuff in perspective when something like that happens, because when you almost check out and leave your family, and it just shows what's truly important. But we're glad you're okay. We're glad you're back.
Yeah, I'm glad to be back, ready to go.
All right. I'm gonna give you an opportunity to go right through this stuff then.
All right.
So, the next item is acknowledgment of receipt of the audit of the Pike County Sheriff's Settlement for 2021 taxes for the period of April 16, 2021 through August 31, 2022. Frank, you've had the opportunity to look at it correct? And everything was in order? All right. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions? See, now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. And we have... Next item is acknowledgment of receipt of the Pike County Public Library District budget for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2023 to June 2024. And we have Delana Atkins. Would you like to come up and give us the presentation? We won't keep you here very long.
I'm sorry. I do have a soft voice.
Would you just introduce yourself, so everybody knows who we're...
My name is Delana Atkins, and I'm the Director of the Pike County Public Library District. I've been at the library for thirty years in August, so I've been there a long time. But each year, we prepare the budget, and we just have to submit it to fiscal court for receipt. So, if you'll see, the budget that you have is the one that we post online for the Department of Local Government, and it just explains our money and what processes that we use to budget that money, things such as materials, things of that nature. And then, if you'll look, it tells you, our budget usually is around close to four million, but you'll see it fluctuates just a little. And then, we have our rainy day funds that cover our retirement, our sick and vacation leave, any kind of work that we do as far as renovating the libraries. And if you've not been out into the system lately, we've just recently renovated Belfry, and we're finishing up on Phelps, hopefully next week. And I have to say, Belfry looks nice, but Phelps is just astounding. So, really nice to see. And our next project for this upcoming year, you will see, will be our Vergey Library. We've already put in a drive-through, and we will start that renovation in August. So, we try to do a library a year and rotate around. So, that's our things for upcoming. We've also just added two new board members, and we look forward to adding a third one, hopefully by the end of this month.
And we'll get with you on that, because, you know, I do intend to make sure that I submit the name for the individuals to be appointed. And, Delana, I want just to clarify, you know, there's... When I was advocating for some control on how to... The board was to be governed, I didn't think it was right that the board could submit names to Frankfurt, and they would give me a choice of who to pick from, because basically, the board's members were picking their own board members. And there's a lot of concern that I had over the... Not because of what's in the libraries, because I don't believe in censorship. I don't believe in banning books, or, you know, we've seen it around the country. I think, I believe in the First Amendment. If you don't want to read something, if you don't like what's in the library, don't read it.
That's true.
It's pre-sample. If you're offended by something, don't check it out. But I am concerned, and I have had a conversation with your board member Greg May. You know, if you look at this budget, there's a $7 million carry for it. I mean, you've got literally two years of saving, of operating costs and savings. And, you know, that's money that's come out of the pockets of the taxpayers that are, some of whom are struggling, and that money's sitting in that account. And one of the things that I talked to one of the board members about was is that money needs to be earning interest. I mean, it needs to be, you know, that should have been in a high-interest savings account or in some kind of investment, so that, you know, it's not just sitting there, that it's drawing interest.
We had approached the bank before, but with the interest rates down and everything, they just never gave us an offer, which we have received some offers recently, and we're working on our investment policy. So, that's something new that we're adding to it. The board members, honestly, I think it helps to have you all in the appointment more, just because our board, we do not pay any salary. I can reimburse them for their cost if they go to a workshop or anything of that nature, their lodging, but we don't pay them. And most people do not want to take the legal responsibility of being on the board. So, a lot of times, we just... Whoever would agree to be on the board was who we submitted.
And I want the public to understand this. The two board members I've put on there, Mr. Hensley, he's just come on. I mean, they've not started any of these fear-mongering things that we heard about shutting libraries down, or banning books, or, you know, whatever. That's... None of that's ever come up, has it?
No. We have, honestly, I've been there thirty years, and we've never had a complaint about a book. Our... The people in Pike County are very forwards, thinking about their reading. They don't usually ever have a complaint about anything of that nature. Usually, it's more of, "You won't let me on the computer because I owe a fine," or "I have an overdue," even though we've now done away with the overdoses on books during COVID. But, you know, our patrons, like I said, they're some of the best. Each area of the county is different. If you go and you look at what's on the shelves, this area reads science fiction. This area wants Christian fiction. Pikeville wants more technology. Just every part of the county is different, and each library you go in is different. And I encourage everyone to go in. We have notary services, and I know a lot of our patrons are just astounded, because at the UPS store, I think they said it was $11 a page. We charge a quarter just to fax something. Our notaries are free to anybody that wants to come in. I mean, there's so many services that we offer free. We do the drivers testing, the printouts for the kids. And a lot of people in the county take advantage. And now, and this is something I really want to push, we received a grant right about the time the flood happened in the Vergey area, and we got hotspots for the area. And our grant pays for these hotspots. And they're not through a local company, because we couldn't get good service, not gonna lie. But these are... You just come, check out a hotspot, take it with you. And my patrons told me that that hotspot was the only one that they got service with in the whole county. And this is free. People can't afford this. Right now, we're helping educate a lot of the people that are taking online classes. They take the hotspot home. A lot of the places, like Pikeville Radiology, their employees use them to work from home. And we have some at each library, and we do keep them in that libraries area to serve their patrons, just because Pikeville can kind of consume us sometimes, because there's just so many more people here. So, we try to keep this many at each library at all times.
You know, I want to, you know, just say that when I became judge executive and we started having these issues over... And my big concern with the library board in the past was the tax rate, because it was so high. I mean, it's 13.5 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Fiscal court's 18.1.
I know in the past, which now, I've been promoted from the very bottom to the very top. I worked there part-time as a teenager and then moved up the rank. And a lot of that was, we were always told that we need the compensating rate to make sure that we have enough to afford the same things we did last year. All of our board members have been above and beyond, if you ask. None of the board members are the type that would be anything that I think was suspect. They were members of the community. We've always tried to get one that's an attorney to kind of give us legal advice, although we do have an attorney on retainer. We've had board members that... Local businesses, other librarians. None of our board members have ever been anything that... I don't feel like if they did something that they shouldn't have, they didn't realize it. And as far as the tax rate goes, we only get what we get from that tax rate. We're not like all these other institutions in Pike County that get funds from the government, funds from law settlements. All we get is that tax money. And hopefully, the new gentleman on the board will be, or females if they're added, will be able to help us invest that. And maybe, I know in the last few years, we've tried not to take any more increases, and so hopefully, it will do better in the future.
Since I've been judge, we've not raised property taxes one penny. And, you know, I mean, as a taxpayer, I mean, first of all, I grew up right across from the library at Vergey. I loved it. It was... I loved to read. And it was a great thing for me and my sister to have that library. And the Johnson family that made that property available, I mean, they did a great thing for the community.
I would like to plug them too. They also gave the donation before the father died recently to renovate the Vergey Library. So, that is one of the restricted donations you see. And a lot of the money that we have in this fund that is over came from the Build America Bonds when Obama was president. If you built, they reimbursed you so much of the money. So, like I said, a lot of the money that we have isn't really... I don't think that they did anything that they shouldn't have done. I just... They maybe didn't quite realize as far as the tax rate on the compensating, but I can't even say that for certain. We were just always told, "You keep the same amount of money," and that's what we did.
Well, I mean, you know, and I'm gonna go back to something that I asked questions about to the former director, is, you know, "Why are you buying property at Justiceville and these things?"
Well, now, the property at Justiceville, that came about because a gentleman approached us, and we needed storage... We had been renting storage units, and if you go back and look in our records, we had eight to nine storage units that we were renting up here from Sid Walters, and we just needed a building to store our stuff. And if you look back in your records also, the courts donated us a lot of stuff too. They donated us shelves and furniture. They've got things out. And we've renovated, and we've upholstered, and we really used everything over as much as we could. So, that's why... And then, when the second piece of property beside that storage unit became available, we could pull a truck down in there to get our stuff in there better, and that's why we bought that. The only other property that we've purchased that I'm aware of is right beside the new library, and that was part of the original agreement. And they had a lawsuit over someone's child. And we had purchased that for parking, because our original intent was to have a theater behind the library. But then Ginny Wiley moved into the area and opened their theater, and that just kind of stopped that in the bin. And right now, if you've been down to the property at beside Lowe's, we're making a park into this for our programming, and we're building a, almost like a shed for the kids, so that we can do more of the STEM activities that the school is pushing. But if you've not visited your libraries, there is a lot that we're doing. And we do a lot of online services, things you can practice for your driver's license test. You can practice for your firefighting test, your law exam, your nursing exam. There's just a lot that people don't realize we do. And as Mr. Hensley, he joined our board last month, and he pointed out, he said, "A lot of your problem is publicity." And like you explained to Mr. Atkins, sometimes the newspapers and the people online go overboard.
And, you know, I... One of the things I've talked to both Greg May and Marvin Hensley, the two people I've nominated for the board, is I want to see an expansion of services into Belfry, into Phelps, at Vergey, Elkhorn City. Because, you know, and Greg said he was shocked at how many programs are actually offered.
We usually get around over 3,000 a month in attendance. But like I said, a lot of time, the location... I know right now, Vergey breaks my heart, because it's always been my favorite library, because it's a little nestled on the creek. And when the school moved out onto the four lane, it's really hurt that library. And the same at Elkhorn, because if people don't go by you... So, I did talk to the board recently about adding... I don't know if you've seen them. They're kind of like a big bus, but they're a vending machine that we could just set out in the areas. But finding land is really hard in this area.
Basically, I was looking at the... How many openings do we have right now? We have Marvin Hensley on there.
We have five board members, and in the past, they were always chosen from each area.
So, Marvin just went on to take over Gary Kendrick's spot.
Yes.
Gary is actually Greg May's first cousin.
Gary died of cancer in January.
Good fellow, and...
Greg went on for Alma Sigler. She was a teacher from the Elkhorn City area. She got a new job, so she couldn't make the meetings and...
So, there's two more coming on. And I have back here a friend of mine who's retired from AT&amp;T, Mr. Chet Hogston, that I intend to appoint. And then, another lady that I intend to appoint is Pam Chaney, because she's a, I think, and may still be teaching at Millard, I think. But she's a teacher. I want both men and women on the board. I plan on leaving Carolyn Tackett on the board. Carolyn's a wonderful...
Wonderful.
There's not a better person in the world than Carolyn Tackett.
No, there is not.
I love her dearly. Close, you know, just a, just a, just as good a person as you'll find. I think Carolyn retired from teaching.
Carolyn is a wonderful board member. She attends every meeting. We couldn't ask for a better one. You will be replacing Johnny Dean Stilner next. He'll be going off the board. And then, in the end of August, you'll be replacing Madonna Morley. I think a lot of you knew her. She was a librarian at Pike Central for years, and then Johns Creek. So, like I said, we've had a diversity. Before that, Oscar was from AT&amp;T, which we really liked the business technology. If you've not been in our libraries also, you'll see a lot of cars parked outside after hours, because we offer wireless all night long. And we do have the fastest lines in the county, because we have the lines that are fiber. And a lot of people come there at night and do their homework and sit out there, so...
I mean, I have kids, you know, and let me say this. As long as I'm county judge, I'm gonna do everything I can to help the library district. Only thing I've ever asked is the library district take into account particularly... You know, I love the new library building. I had concerns about the amount of money that was spent on it. When you spend 12, 13 million dollars on a building in a county that is losing population, you know, we're down to 56,000. We're predicting us to be at 50,000 by the next census.
When I started in 1993, we were at eight, right at 82,000. And over the years, we've saved CDs, anything that the bank would give us. And my building has paid off. We paid it off. We opened in 2014. We paid it off in 2019. We did save. We did scram. We've held off on hiring some staff. We tried to have one person in each library that had a master's in library science, and then support staff that, that way, they got... Every library got the same representation as far as information they needed and things of that nature. And I really do think we managed the money well. Maybe some people see it differently, and I know we have more money, but we've only ever done what we've been told. And when the Gatsby went in, they told us, they said, "Keep saving your money. Fund your liabilities. Make sure you have money to cover this," and that's what we did. We've never done anything different. And as Mr. Hensley said, he said, "You all have impeccable records, and anybody's welcome to come up there." I've got cabinets down the hallway of everything that was ever spent, every receipt. There is nothing, anybody can see any of the audits. The new audit I uploaded on DLG, it will be available after July 1st. We've never had a bad audit, except saying you need to hire more people. We'll try, and we'll try with the new board members. I mean, they're very nice gentlemen. We've not had any issue with anybody. And I think they're a little nervous, but they've done a good job so far, so...
Well, the people that I intend to nominate are gonna be people who want the libraries to succeed. They're not there to undermine the libraries, like some people are trying to say. I just felt that there needed to be more oversight over the money. Like I said, you know, there's opportunities that have been probably lost over investments that were made that could have generated more money. There's people who were concerned over the amount of the tax rate. There's people who were concerned over the amount of money that was spent on the new library. And I think, I think that's a legitimate concern in a county that's...
It is a legitimate concern. And honestly, we wouldn't have built the new library if we had a choice. We were... That was a parking situation. Our program's cut in half. Our number of patrons entering cut in half, because patrons, mothers can't jerk their children up in the weather from down here at the Riverfield and get them up to the library. And if they could get a parking place in the parking garage, we built that library for programming and meeting rooms. And one of the things, if you notice about our library, we have quite a few job fairs. And we sometimes have, I think the last one, they said 800 people showed up for the job fairs.
There was one just two, three, four weeks ago. I came by there, and there was a big crowd.
And I've talked to Mr. May and the other board members too. At some point, I would like to do something to... Our meeting rooms are booked constantly. There's not a day that they're not. And we have a lot of businesses that would like to meet there too, but we can't pause our programming. I would like to have another place that they could also let businesses meet also for like trainings and things of that nature. Because we're nonprofit, and what I explain to a lot of the businesses when they ask, it's not that we don't want to help you, but you're a for-profit. And if I let you meet in there for free, then everybody wants to meet. And I mean, we've been even approached by churches wanting to have church there. And we don't have the staff to have someone in there to cover the legal liability and things of that nature. We really are trying to serve the community the best that we can.
Well, it's my intention, Mr. Chet Hogston, who's here, he comes to every court meeting. He actually showed up Tuesday. Didn't know that we had moved the meeting. We don't always agree on a lot on everything, but he is a smart man. He cares about the community. He's wanting to see the community do well. And I intend to nominate him as the, as the next board member.
You should receive the paperwork anytime. I had spoken to Ginny earlier. I thought you would have got it by now. But it should be coming anytime. They did recently hire a new state librarian, so that might be the holdup. I got a card introducing her to me yesterday.
And then, my next appointment after that will be Pam Chaney. If Pam wants to do that, it would be... She teaches at Millard, and I think it's important that we have, you know, somebody with her background on there. So, I think we would have a very strong board with Carolyn and... Got good people that have been on the board. Don't have any problem with any of them. But I just think that, you know, it's sometimes having, you know, people with business backgrounds like Marvin and Greg, they can help with things like capital plans. You know, I think that's something that you, the newspapers have talked about, the need for a capital plan, replacing equipment and vehicles and HVAC and those kind of things.
We have a strategic plan that we had a lady do for us. We employed her from out of state. We've tried to do that the last little bit. We have our own, we call it basically a maintenance facilities plan that tells us when, like this year, we replaced the computers at this library, this year, that one. So, we welcome any advice you have, anything that you can do to help us. We're always looking for new ideals. Recently, one of our things that we've been very proud of is we've been playing with the solar. And we actually put solar panels on the buildings at Justiceville. So, those buildings are powered with solar. So, that's cut our thing down, and we're looking next at the ones at Lee Avenue. Although, Lee Avenue is one of the modern marvels of libraries, where we had saved and we'd visited different libraries. We picked everything that we liked at other libraries and put in this library. And we actually have geothermal heating, which is... And we actually have geothermal heating, which is our bill for the Lee Avenue branch is equal to all the other branches combined, which is just wonderful. And it's just, like I said, having good people and going to places and learning things that can make us better. We look forward to both men, they've been wonderful so far, so we look forward to the next two.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you on the position and thank you for everything you've done, all your years of service and we just want to help you. And I want to make sure that the people that I nominate for that board are good members and are gonna make a positive contribution. I think that's all the court wants as well.
Well, we got Greg, I think in April was his first day and Marvin just attended his first meeting, so hopefully we'll progress.
You know, Marvin was, some people may not know, you know, Greg's a businessman, got extensive experience in, you know, everything from water, HVAC, construction. Marvin owns a lot of property. Marvin was the ag extension agent.
He explained that to us.
And has a doctorate, you know, so, you know, we've got two really diverse backgrounds. I think it's good that you have a former ag extension agent on the library board.
Yes, we have done a lot of work with the extension agency. I can't toother horn enough. They are just, the extension agency gets overlooked a lot. They are just out of this world.
Bliss, we appreciate everything and we're gonna get you out of here. So is there a motion to acknowledge receipt or is there any questions, I should say?
I don't have none, Judge.
And if anybody would like to visit the libraries, you can stop down at Lee and I'll take you around. It takes about eight hours to go around aisle six, but I'll take you around.
If there's no questions, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Pike County Public Library District budget overview for the upcoming fiscal year?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Say it.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any questions, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
That's John.
Yes. Next item is discussion and potential approval of the recommended reapportionment of the Pike County Commissioner districts as proposed by the Pike County Reapportionment Committee. We've got County Clerk Darryl Pugh and Mitch Justice, who is one of the committee members. I want to come on up and that information is in the packet.
I was a fair person, but I don't have a vote. I guess if anybody has a question, I can try to answer, but I'm not.
Darryl, would you like to go ahead and explain it? Yeah, or Mitch, whoever wants to explain it and what was done here and how it was done and who drafted the maps and so forth.
Okay, we got the maps and we, we had the information of each precinct, how many people were in a precinct. And the whole idea behind the reapportionment is to try to make the number of voters in each commissioner's district as equals we, we could, I guess with as little as change as we could. Or I think that was the general feeling of the commission. Mitch had some points and on the vote, you know, he, he actually opposed the one we submitted and he had some valid points, but at, at the end of the day, they felt like proposal one best represented what we were, or they were appointed to do was to equalize the voters.
Mitch, you represented, just would you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Mitch Justice. I represent District Three. I've been a teacher here in the county for quite a few years now. I'm at Belfry High School, twenty-four years now. I'm a homebound teacher for Pike County.
So you had some concerns over this proposal, is that correct?
Yes, well, not necessarily concerns with, with the proposal you had in front of you. I mean, nothing but, I just felt that proposal two did a better job of meeting the requirements of the constitution, the constitutional requirements than proposal one did. That was my only thing, particularly in regards to compactness. I know population was something that was discussed in that meeting and, and proposal two does give a wider population spread of two hundred and ten versus one, but I felt because it was still within the limits of, of what we were given, the fact that the second proposal was more compact, that I felt that it did a better job. And I did have a little, both are contiguous, of course, but when I looked at that, I'm thinking, when I look at contingency, I'm thinking also adjacency, another way to put that. And, and I felt that proposal two also made everything appear more adjacent to one another than proposal one did. Of course, you could, if you put two points in there, you can drive anywhere within, they're not separated, they meet that constitutional requirement. I just felt that proposal two did a better job of doing that. Because the way I was looking at it, if, if, you know, if, if one of you gentlemen asked me to bring you something and hand it to you, I can do that very easily, come straight to you. You build a barrier between us, I can steal it, I can go through the door and come back. I just felt that it was, the proposal two made everything a little bit more adjacent and as far as compactness went, everything was much more compact. As far as having any legal issues with the other, I don't. I just felt it was my obligation, you know, I had to vote my heart and my conscience and I just felt proposal two was the best proposal.
So the public understands, the process is you take the population of Pike County, you've got three commissioner districts and you divide that by three, which gives a target number of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six residents per district. And the districts were substantially out of balance over the last decade. For instance, Commissioner District One had twenty-two, five oh four. District Three had seventeen, six, seventeen. District Two was eighteen, five, forty-eight. So you know, really you had two districts that were out of balance and that was one and three. District One had grown. District Two stayed about the same and District Three had lost population. The numbers appear to be, under the plan that's been adopted, shows a District One population of nineteen nine oh one, District Two, twenty thousand seventy-seven, and District Three, eighteen, six, ninety-one. And those are all within plus or minus five percent of the target number and the highest to lowest is seven point oh eight percent. So they appear to be, you know, balanced to meet the constitutional requirements. It looks like, what as I understand it, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, that district, that the, that the proposed plan moved Upper Cloy and Garden Village into District Two and then move from District One and moved Lit Creek and Mouth Card from District Two into District Three. Is that, is that correct? My question was, was there a reason that, that how those precincts were, were picked?
By the number of residents.
Okay, well, I mean, there's obviously other precincts that could have been chosen. Darryl, did you, are you the one that came up with the initial proposal?
No, sir.
Who, who came up with that? Because that map was flying around and I was just wondering who, who had that put together?
Well, I think it was pretty much a consensus on, by the time they met, how they, how they thought it should go, you know, the.
But hang, hang on a second. That, that map was done before the committee ever met, is that correct?
Proposal one and two were both done.
Who had, who had those done before the committee ever met?
I did at the request of some of the people on the committee.
You couldn't have, were the maps done before the committee was appointed?
The original map, the original map was done as it is, was as it is today. I supplied that though. Well, he wasn't, he wasn't actually on the committee till.
Well, they were, all, all the committee members were appointed at the same time. So my, that's, that's the concern I had is this map gets put together before the committee because I saw the map before the committee was ever done. So obviously, somebody took the steps to put this map together before this reapportionment committee was ever done. I just wonder who did that?
Well, I don't know that anybody had authority to do it. I got the original map and we started throwing out different scenarios and.
My concern was, and I had a lot of calls, because you know, I don't know if I'll run again or not, it sticks one way, half dozen the other. But you know, this map puts two former commissioners that were defeated in the last election in the same district and I just sort of thought that was interesting that of the precincts that were picked, that that happened that way. Because this map was done before this reapportionment committee. Mitch, were you given a copy of this map when you all met?
I was given a copy of when we met. For the thing, I had all three of these maps, the original, this one and the option two, which I think I requested.
You know, my, my concern is that the maps were done before the reapportionment committee was ever assembled. Because the reapportionment committee would have been the group that would have had the authority to put them together.
And on the option two, the day we were appointed, I requested, we were looking at this and I requested that one, so.
Okay, but it was our, but you were already given a copy of this proposed one that's to be adopted, the day you all met, is that correct?
I had these maps, yes.
Before, before the meeting ever took place between the reapportionment committee?
Well, I got them the day that we went down, we were appointed.
The day you were appointed, you got the maps?
Yeah.
No.
Not the, not the two, I got the original. There was a working map is what I was shown that day.
I requested.
Okay.
Because you asked me to, so I started, I did request it up.
Well, my.
I did not say I don't need any of the negotiations.
Well, my question is, this map that's to be adopted was floating around before the reapportionment committee met. I'm just trying to wonder who put that map together.
I think, I think after everybody was appointed, did we not meet in my office?
We went downstairs, yes.
We talked about it and by the time we met, I had the maps, what both sides, there was two opinions, what they thought they wanted, I got both maps, mate.
Well, I mean, and we can find out, Tim, did you do these? When were they done, you know?
They were done.
Okay, before the reapportionment committee met, the maps were done?
It wasn't before they, they. Darryl talked to them, right? They have a meeting.
Well, we have this plan in the options, as I understand it, Colonel Downey, we can either adopt this when the court can, or the court can reject it and do its own plan by August, is that correct?
Yes, that I interpreted. That's what the, that's what the Congress commissioned, not to reject this, G. Her office, June the second. So using that as a thing. August the first, don't approve this plan, you and the three.
Um, so the matter before the court is whether the court wants to adopt the report of the commissioners appointed to reapportion the commissioner districts. That is on the agenda today. This was a two to one vote with Elman Waters and David Sanders representing Districts One and Two, supporting the plan and District Three reapportion by Commissioner Mitch Justice opposing, is that correct?
Yes.
So is there a motion by the court to adopt the report of the reapportionment commissioners previously appointed by the court pursuant to ARS sixty-seven point oh four or five?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Is there a second?
I'll take it.
We have a second by Commissioner Scott. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
That's John.
No. So we have an adoption of the reapportionment commissioners appointed and this essentially moves Mouth Card and Lit Creek into District Three and moves Garden Village and Upper Cloy from District One into District Two. So at the next election, when candidates file to run, the, we have a list of the, Roy, is there anything else we have to do besides adopting it?
Yeah.
Okay, so when the candidates choose to run, District One will consist of A one oh one, Bessie Riddle, Arnold, Hurricane Creek, Pike High School, Lower Pike, Myers Towers, Coal Run, Bypass, Mullins School, Brushy, Lower Johns Creek, Island Creek, Raccoon, Burning Fork, Stone Cold, New Shelby, York, Mida and Joe's Creek. District number two will consist of Kane, Jaeger, Old Shelby, Long Fork, Dorton, Elwood, Upper Elkhorn, Elkhorn Sea Hall, Belcher, Raznick, Looney, Millard, Greasy Creek, Upper Cloy, Marbone, Rock House, Garden Village, Henry Clay, Hellier and Ash Camp. And District Three will be Mouth Card, Lit Creek, Grapevine, Feds Creek, Phelps, Blackberry, Deskins, Freiburg, Majestic, Wolford, McCarr, Belfry, Lower Big Creek, Dr. J Johnson, Bevan School, Runyon, Turkey Creek, Huddy and Old Pond. So those, that map will be, that map will be available in clerk's office and also available in the county judge's office if anybody wants to stop by and look at it. And the report of the three district and commissioners is adopted. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is authorization to apply to the Economic Development Administration's Assistant to Coal Communities Grant funding to increase the original award of zero four seven nine oh seven six four four from one million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ten to two million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ten, increasing the funding by four hundred thousand to further authorize an application to LGEDF, single county funds for eighty thousand to serve as the required twenty percent match. Sharon, you want to explain this for me real quick? And Jerry, why don't you make your way on up too, because we'll, have you ready to go as soon as Sharon's done?
The reason we needed to go back to EDA, I requested, talked to them, is that the bids came in over bid on water, the water system by four hundred thousand. And so we can't complete the wastewater the way we want to do it with a big package plant if we don't get that four hundred thousand, but they were pretty sure they could give it to me. I just have to go back and redo that grant, change all the numbers and narration a little bit.
So this is for the Wolf Pit Industrial Site?
Yes, this is for the Wolf Pit Site because of the way the bids came in.
And I think, you know, with COVID and everything going through the roof, I mean, I don't think it's just here, I think across the country, these projects are going.
Oh, it's every project I've got.
And I dread to see how much it's going to drive the price up of the landfill expansion because it's going to be.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be, Reggie says thirty-five percent.
That's what they've been running, anywhere from thirty to forty percent is what our bids are coming in over. You know, we've had to go back to coal severance on our water project, but EDA was kind enough to let, to allow us to come back to the table and ask for more money because so many small communities couldn't even do their projects because they don't have coal severance or they don't have a good enough budget. So they turned the money back in or letting us apply for it.
You know, we've been very conservative since I've been judge with our coal severance tax because coal severance tax was never intended to buy garbage trucks and some of the stuff that was done with it, trophy cases. It was intended for economic development and this is a, this, this Wolf Pit Site is going to be a huge deal when we get it done because it gives us, and I can't go into details, but I've already been approached by an institution that is interested in that property and they've already been up there looking at it twice and it's a project that if it. And it's a project that if it happens and it's. You know, I'm not one of these people that goes out here and, you know, when. The inner blue kind of deals and blows, you know, the horn about, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I would rather wait till we get it, you know, ironed out and have, and have the paperwork signed before we announce something. But it's a project that could have a significant impact. On the county and on the region if it happens. If it doesn't happen, you know, we tried. But that Wolf Pit Site's got to be done. And because the county, you know, it's, I've always said it's inexcusable that the largest county in Kentucky. Does not have a, an industrial site that was ready to go. Sharon, what about that, that money that the legislature set aside for industrial parks?
Oh, the KPDI?
Yeah.
Um, I'll be submitting that tomorrow.
Okay.
It's highly competitive, but I think each area, each county will receive so much funding. I'm applying for two million dollars. If that's what we decide. We can apply for up to two million, but we probably need to talk about that after a while.
Cause you know, if you look at what Commissioner Atkins District, I mean, it's where he grew up, probably in that area. I mean, you have Wolf Pit, you're going to have John Moore Branch. Those are control field. You're going to have, you got the residential, potential residential development up in.
Beaver.
Beaver, I always called it Beaver. Then you've got that Wolf Pen Site right at the state line. It's, it's pretty small. I'm not sure.
Twenty one acres, but it's small. It's, it would do better and we had met with Austin Bradley Superintendent of the Brakes. To put in a visitor center, to do our part for Kentucky, a visitor center for the Brakes, maybe a campground store. They're all in. They said they would operate it for us.
We don't have the deed for that site.
No, I need that deed and I need the deed for John Moore. It's ready.
Well, John Moore, I don't think you're going to get the deed to that until that bridge is done. We're not going to get that. But you know, if you've got John Moore and then you'll get Jesse Branch.
Yeah.
That's not control field, but it's a big site too. That, you know, and we named, the last court named that, the Pike County. Was Industrial and Technology Corridor.
Corridor, yes.
So I mean, it gives us an opportunity to have some economic development. It really opens Elcorn City up. For growth when that new road's done.
John Moore Branch is the largest site.
And, and John Moore Branch is the largest site. But we got to get this one done, because I mean, it's the first one we've got a deed for. And you know, by the time this administration wraps up, that will be done. Trail system will be open. Hopefully will be either constructed on the first phase of the landfill expansion, or at least it'll be in the works. So. But we just, I, I wanted to make sure that we're pursuing that state money that's set aside for industrial.
Do tomorrow.
All right. So is there a motion to authorize the EDA application? In the drawdown of the LGEDF coal severance money for the twenty percent match?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? See now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That motion covers both the LGEDF and the EDA.
I think it did.
Okay, good deal. I just wasn't sure.
And I'm going to add, Judge, I spent about seven hours up there at the industrial site Saturday mowing. It's a very pretty place up there. Wants to get it going.
That industrial site, you know, has, it's got to be done, because.
Yep. Well, they got the tank up there. I seen Saturday when I went and mowed, because you know, we're going to shoot fireworks there on July the first. Everybody come up, because there are going to be hot dogs and then at dark fireworks at ten o'clock.
The bid, the bid opening for the wastewater is on Monday. This came on Monday.
Well, I can tell you this much, having an industrial site doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're going to get something. Not having one is a hundred percent guarantee you're not going to get any economic development opportunity.
That's, that's a nice, nice area up there. I mean, once we get it going, it'll be.
Water's almost completely.
You know, the, the industrial site where the Blue Oval Battery Factory's coming in was built by Governor Pat. And when he was governor, it took twenty years to get something in there. But now you're getting the biggest investment in Kentucky history. But if, you know, you hadn't had Governor Patton's foresight in planning, that wouldn't have happened. So you know, it's just something that'll hopefully pay, you know, dividends down the road. All right, Jerry, you're next up. Approval for Jerry Atkins, Director of Trails to present the Hillbilly Trails Vendor Agreement to Potential Vendors. Can you explain this?
Yes, Judge, I recently advertised for Pike County retailers who would be interested in selling trail permits. For Hillbilly Trails System. At the current time, I have fourteen Pike County businesses that have agreed to sell our permits. We looked at more in the future, but at this time, that's probably all that we need till we make sure everything flows smoothly. Once again, everything that I've done in this job capacity is something new that this court's never done before. So we want to get the kinks ironed out if there are any. I do look to add more businesses in the future. Anyone, any retailer that is listening, or might have an interest in selling permits for the trails system. Now or in the future can contact me at the judge's office, four three two six two four seven.
One of the things I, I think we need to look at too down the road, and I'm not sure. How much you've talked about that is, you know, selling advertisements for sites, for signs. Sponsorships, you've got the Appalachian Wireless Arena. I mean, you know. I think we need to look at some local businesses to see if there's, you know. Companies, you know, businesses that would want, you know, sponsor the trail system, you know, in exchange, get advertisement in terms of signage. Those kind of things as a way to help generate revenue to get the trail system up and operational. Not sure if y'all have talked about that at all or not.
We have discussed it. We've not come down to the final decision, make sure we're covered on the legality side of it. That's something we have, have discussions on, yes.
Is there a motion to authorize the Director of Trails to present the Hillbilly Trails Vendor Agreement? To potential vendors and to authorize him to have those agreements signed?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? See now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, Jerry, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item is the first reading of opposed road ordinance adopting Josh Coleman Road into the county road system. Fabian, are we ready with that?
We are. Yeah, the favorable work, I think, Commissioner.
Colonel Downey, go ahead and please present the first reading.
All right, and to answer your question, Judge, there is more than adequate. It requires four signatures. I think in this one, you had seven landowners, so it does meet the requirement. Whereas it has been determined to be in the best interest of the public for the Pike County Fiscal Court to formally accept. Public roads into the official county road system. And whereas KRS one seven eight point zero one zero one subsection one subsection B defines a county road as a public road which has been adopted by the Fiscal Court into the county road system. What this road is, is going to be in District Two. It's the Josh Coleman Road. The length of road is point one tenth mile plus fifty six feet. And that would be.
All right, this will be active at the, on the agenda for the next meeting. All right, next item is warning of bids. Is. Mr. Finn, please proceed.
We had a bid opening on June thirteenth for our annual June bids that we have to have under contract by July first. The first bid was bid number one nine dash two zero two three for scrap tire removal. Two bids were received. Patriot Recycling of Bristol, Tennessee. And Porter Tire Centers of Olive Hill, Kentucky. Patriot Recycling Bristol bid twenty seven hundred and ten dollars per trailer. And Porter Tire Center of Olive Hill bid two thousand per trailer. It's my recommendation, we award the bid to Porter Tire Center Incorporated for a bid price of two thousand dollars per trailer load. Bid number two zero dash two zero two three is for bituminous hot mix. One bid was received. It was from Mountain Enterprises of Lexington. We purchased this product on a floating scale depending on the oil prices. Currently, class two base price is eighty one oh seven per ton. It's my recommendation, we award the bid to Mountain Enterprises. Bid number two one dash two zero two three is for hardware items and small tools. Four bids were received. United Central of Chapmanville, West Virginia. Justice Supply of Pikeville, Thompson Hardware of Pikeville and Tri-County Truck Parts of Kemper. It's my recommendation, we award the bid to all four of the vendors. Bid number two two dash two zero two three is for off-road diesel. One bid was received. It was from Jones Oil of Pikeville. The bidders usually bid rack price plus the taxes. The only variation in the bids is the cost of transportation. And Jones Oil bid six cents per gallon for transportation. It's my recommendation, we award the bid to Jones Oil. Bid number two three dash two zero two three is for concrete. One bid was received. It was the Wells Group of West Liberty, Kentucky. It's my recommendation, we award the bid to Wells Group. Bid two four dash two zero two three is for office supplies. One bid was received. It was from C and R Office Supply. We also purchase office supplies from other vendors that are on our co-op contracts. But it's my recommendation, we award this bid to C and R Office Supply. Bid two five dash two zero two three is for drill steel retainer in place. Two bids were received. King Creek Drilling of Zo, Kentucky and Blue Rock LLC of Jackson. King Creek Drilling bid thirty eight dollars and fifty cents per foot. And Blue Rock bid thirty eight dollars and ninety cents per foot. From what I understand, we have quite a bit of this work that needs to be done in this upcoming year. It'd be my recommendation, we award the bid to both King Creek and Blue Rock. Bid two six dash two zero two three is for on-road diesel fuel. Two bids were received. Jones Oil Company of Pikeville and Go Petro of Combs, Kentucky. On the transportation cost, Jones Oil bid six cents per gallon and Go Petro bid seventeen cents per gallon. Both bids have rack price plus taxes and transportation costs. It's my recommendation, we award the bid to Jones Oil.
For about twenty, bid twenty twenty three for bituminous hot mix to Mountain Enterprises. Hardware items with bid twenty one twenty twenty three. The United Central Supply, Justice Supply, Thompson Hardware, Tri-County Truck Parts. Bid twenty two dash twenty twenty three for off-road diesel to Jones Oil. Bid twenty three dash twenty twenty three for concrete to the Wells Group. Bid twenty four twenty twenty three for office supplies, C and R Office Supply. Bid twenty five twenty twenty three for drill steel retainer in place to. Both King Creek Drilling and the Blue Rock. And also. Bid twenty six dash twenty twenty three for on-road diesel to Jones Oil Company and Go Petro. I'm sorry. Bid twenty six dash twenty twenty three to Jones Oil Company. The two bidders were Jones Oil and Go Petro, Jones Oil being the lowest price. Greg, though, we are awarding both the drill steel. Your recommendation is to both companies because of their availability and.
Yes, sir.
In the time.
Tremendous amount of work that we need done in this upcoming year, so we really need both of them. We've had both of them last year also.
And we are still to some extent under the emergency. Because these are emergency replace, you know, embankment repairs and stuff that we're trying to get to. For the flood, okay. All right, is there a motion to award the bids as stated?
I'll make my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? See now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is Road Commissioners. Pike County Road Department, the Road Supervisors Report. Mr. Little, you have anything? You sit there, just pull your microphone up, turn it on.
Well, Judge, the only thing that I would, that I would say at all would be that we didn't start. We started paving on grassy this week. That was just a little bit sooner than what I thought it would be. And that happened because Mountain had called me and they were not loading out of their own plant up here. They were loading at Martin, so that gave me full access to that plant, meaning my trucks could come and go. So yesterday, I mean, Tuesday and Wednesday, I paved myself. And then today I've got Thomas. Who, you know, he's running the paver for me today and we should finish up. I hope the people are a little patient. I know yesterday, you know, they were getting aggravated because of long holdups, but. One thing that I have to say though is.
They get mad when they don't get paid, but.
And that's what happens and what, and just a little bit of education is anytime you have to pick that screed up on that paver. And move to let traffic by, when you come back and sit back down, now you've made a bad spot in that road, no matter what you do or who, what company is doing it. You've got a tie in there. So every tying in, you're going to feel when you run over it. You have a seam. So you know, you want to stay on that, on that mat as long as you can and not have to move. And that's, that's why, and honestly, the reason why is so that they have a better road to run on. And there wasn't a lot, but there was some, you know, that, that got aggravated. Now, I have to give them credit though. There, at one time, there was a long delay. I did hold them for quite a while before I let them through. They were a little mad and I could understand that, but it was. So I could finish up and I got through the day with only one seam, so I felt pretty good. And actually, we put down thirteen hundred and six, thirteen hundred and some ton yesterday, so that's quite a bit of asphalt too. It is, yes.
Yeah, I went up and took a look at what you all done. You done good job.
Did it look pretty good to you?
It did. I went all the way to the hill of Holler and come back out the first day, then the next day. I went back up yesterday and looked, looked like you moved a whole lot quicker yesterday than you did before yesterday.
And we did, but there was, there was a, a little, two things. As close you get to the mouth of the holler, the faster trucks get to you. They don't have to back as far. And then two is the, the further you go up, the narrower it gets. So it's just a little slower. But it, you know, you, we did pick up, we picked up about three hundred more ton yesterday than we had on Tuesday.
Yeah, I could tell that you got a little more, but when you get down there near the mouth, it's going to be a lot. That's too wide, ain't it?
Well, yeah, today, every, today, all day long is, is two, is a double pull. Yesterday, I would just double pull some and then some I could get through with one pull. Today, there was nothing but double pull. And that's what I'd even talked to him about. Was just running one pull, running one lane all the way down, so you could let traffic go on, on one lane. All right, and then when we switch over, come back, roll this lane, put the traffic on that lane, and then you pull the other, other side. So today shouldn't be as bad at holding up on traffic as it was yesterday.
Good deal, good deal. That's a good one.
Oh, one other thing that is just for the people at Penny Street. I know that's the bridge, but tomorrow, with the weather cooperates, we will pour the deck. Tomorrow on that bridge and then it's just building the road and doing a little demo and getting the people on it. Getting the people on the bridge, so we're, we're almost completed with the Penny Street Bridge. And that's all.
I'll get with him later, Judge.
Oh, can I say one other thing? I'm not trying to be long-winded and I'm very sorry, but if you see, if you look on there. You'll notice this year on the mowing, we have done something different because that has become such a hot topic. Is every road that is mowed, it also has the date beside of it that it is mowed. That way, anybody can look on there and, and you can see the date that your road was mowed on.
I appreciate all of you, Jones, are busting you hides, mowing, blacktopping, cutting trees. I've, I've outraged you several times going out. I don't know what it is on Marbone, but trees don't want to stand. For some reason, in the middle of the night, they're just falling. You know, I've called and woke you up, but.
I had asked if somebody was notching the trees on us up there.
I know, and I, I mean, honestly, everybody, everybody's working herself, I mean, and putting forth the effort.
They are.
I appreciate everything y'all are doing. Sure do. Yeah, well, I talked to one boy the other day, well, he was at Double Quick, the one at Belcher, and he was starting over. He had already made one whole round. He was starting back over to make another round mowing, so.
Yeah, so he's in Coon Creek, he was in Coon Creek mowing this week, so that's the second time this year.
Yeah, that's what he was telling me. It was like Monday. I think I seen him Double Quick at morning before he went to work and he was starting over.
Honestly, I'm hoping with the new mowers, we'll get four, because average, or averaged for the last few years.
You know, we're putting forth the effort for people.
If we could get four, if we could get four, we'd be flying. And I'm thinking we may get four out of the new mowers. Cause there, there seem to be. because they're, they're seem to be pretty fast. I think so, yeah. But it's proven out so far that they are.
That's what I said. He was, he was telling me he was starting on his second round, so that's, that's pretty good, you know? He seemed to be very pleased with it.
Most of them are. I've not had anyone that yet that really wasn't. And the operators I'm talking about, all the operators seem to really like them.
I know.
I mean, it was an adjustment because it's new.
Don't fall out on you, it's true, but I know 90% of the people on these hollows has been pleased with them, too. They've done, a lot of people brag on them, and hey, the people in Wolf Pit are very pleased with them in different places. I mean, they're talking about how good they're doing. I mean, there been a lot of people, believe, believe me, I mean, you know, it's been saying, hey, they do a good job, so... Yeah, I remember those.
Faster. They are moving faster. And I think a lot of that has to do because they can mow in front of them versus the side of them. It's just easier to see. You're looking forward to where you're going and also mowing at the same time instead of...
Like I said, we've been getting a lot of compliments. I've been getting more compliments on them than I have complaints, believe it or not. I mean, people are... Yeah.
Drill steel. We did, we did have had one hit a piece of drill steel, you know, where they'd left it high on the side of the road. Water weeds had grown up around it, and he caught that drill steel.
About 12 year ago, I remember one cutting top of a fire hydrant off.
Yeah, that did happen.
Yeah, that's what I said. That was, it was long before this administration. It was back in the day. I come out of rock house, and they're set, shooting water up in there, you know, they'd cut the top of it off.
All right. So, is there a motion to approve, pleaded and scheduled?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Or please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Dutch Jones?
Yes. All right. Treasury business. Mr. Stacy, please proceed.
Acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and Clerk's 2550 report for May 2023.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and Clerk's 2550 report for May?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, second.
Motion.
By Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes.
Adoption of a proposed resolution to approve the subaward agreement with Mountain Water District for ARPA funds.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And approval of that subaward agreement between Mountain Water District and Pike County Fiscal Court for ARPA funds and for the judge executive to sign all related documents.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Authorize a check from the ARPA bank account to Mountain Water District in the amount of $274,907.78 for expenditure approval number one, and checks to Mountain Compass Municipal Advisors and Sturgill Turner Law Firm in the amount of $4,123.62 for grant admin fees.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Authorize a check to Elliott Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $138,837.40 for construction of the new Pikeville Senior Citizen Center. This would be draw request number five, pass through money.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Last thing I have would be to authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated June 21st, and any other utility bills received before checks are run, which will be tomorrow.
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. We do have an E for executive session. Colonel, would you please instruct the public in the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky Open Meeting Law?
Pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, you're permitted to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss proposed or pending litigation, and under paragraph F to discuss specific personnel matters.
All right. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. We'll stand recessed and return as soon as we finish executive session. Motion to adjourn from executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes. It is my motion to acknowledge the hiring of Dusty Austin Stevens as a heavy equipment operator on the Robinson Creek Road Lot at a 6H rate of pay effective 6/19/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Kevin O'Neill Wallace as a general labor with the Road Department Special Crew at a 2H rate of pay effective 6/7/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Nicholas Rick Stepp as a general labor with the Road Department Special Crew at a 3H rate of pay effective 6/8/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Timothy Scott Belcher as a general labor with the Road Department Special Crew at a 2H rate of pay of 6, effective 6/8/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Zachary Shane Yates as a general labor with the Road Department Special Crew at a 2H rate of pay effective 6/8/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Devin Malik Warren as a loader with the Sideway Slot Area Number 1 at a 2H rate of pay effective 6/9/23, to acknowledge the termination of Kimberly Lynn Joyce as a custodian, effective 6/20/23, to acknowledge the resignation of Shannon Smallwood as a weed mower on Road Lot 4, effective 6/17/23, and to acknowledge the retirement of Donald E. Stepp from the Pike County Jail on 6, effective 6/30/2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Dutch Jones?
Yes. All right. Anything from the Department of Supervisors? Judge Higgins, anything? Anything from the County Attorney's Office? Anything from the county commissioners?
I don't have nothing, Dave, Judge. I'm just glad to be back, and appreciate all the employees, what they're doing, all of you, and I'm glad to see you, and glad to be able to sit here again, so... And July the 1st, our fire department's gonna be shooting fireworks up at the industrial park, 10 o'clock at night. But we're gonna start about 2 o'clock during the day. Free hot dogs, inflatables for the kids. We've already got it all planned up. Everybody come up and join us, be with us. I mean, we'll be there all day. I think one of the little car clubs is gonna have like a cruise in, let everybody look through old vehicles, and just have like a good community day. But it's July the 1st, first Saturday in July. Everybody come up and be with us and enjoy yourself.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Any other business to come before the court? Seeing none.[1745.81]